Go ahead and call our meeting for October ninth, two thousand and twenty five to order. And I'm going to turn things over to Commissioner Brain to leave some indications.
All right, let us pray. Hey, Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather tonight. Lord, I want to share some praise and thanks for letting my little boy come home from the hospital today. He's doing well, and we're glad to have him home and back to his usual self. Thank you, you know, for the cooler temps that we've got coming in. We ask that you watch over our citizens and be with us tonight as we do the town's business. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, next up is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we've got a couple of proclamations to read. Item A is recognition of the Kiwanis Club of Youngsville. And proclaiming October eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, Kiwanis Club of Youngsville Day. Whereas Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world, one child in one community at a time. And whereas the Carolina's District of Kiwanis International includes both North and South Carolina with about one hundred and thirty Kiwanis Clubs and four thousand two hundred adult members. And whereas the Youngsville Kiwanis Club was chartered on October first, two thousand and nine, and will continue to have a positive impact on the community and residents. And whereas the mission of the Carolina's District of Kiwanis International, including the Youngsville Club, is to improve the lives of children throughout North and South Carolina by ensuring that every community has the opportunity to be served by a strong, resilient, inclusive, and impactful Kiwanis Club. And whereas, in addition to improving the lives of children in Youngsville and surrounding communities and communities around the world, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and opportunities for community service. Be resolved, I Fonzie A. Flowers, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Youngsville, North Carolina, to hereby proclaim October eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, as Kiwanis Club of Youngsville Day, and recognize that the members of Kiwanis International and the Kiwanis Club of Youngsville, North Carolina, provide meaningful service to children within the community. In witness hereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Youngsville to be affixed this ninth day of October, two thousand and twenty five. Are there any Kiwanis Club members in the tonight that might want to come up here and take this off my hands? Just one or two or three or four, five?
We have to take a picture too?
If I'd known, I would have soured.
If you didn't sour it, you know. Did we get it?
It is best if I put it behind you, Mary.
All right, I've got one more proclamation to read. This one is pedestrian safety month proclamation. Whereas Youngsville averages more than one hundred crashes each year, with more than ten roadway deaths each year in Franklin County. And whereas pedestrians are the road pedestrians are the road uses most at risk of serious injury and death. And whereas pedestrian deaths on North Carolina roads increased from two hundred and twenty five in two thousand and eighteen to two hundred and forty three in two thousand and nineteen, two hundred and forty nine in two thousand and twenty, to two hundred and sixty nine in two thousand and twenty two, and two hundred and seventy in two thousand and twenty three. And whereas, safe, accessible streets are essential for the well-being of all residents of Youngsville. And whereas Pedestrian Safety Month highlights the importance of sharing the road to reduce crashes, injuries, and fatalities in Youngsville. Whereas death and serious injuries on Youngsville's roads are unacceptable and can be prevented by proactively addressing safety. And whereas promoting a culture of safety starts with a commitment from every road user to prioritize safety and their values, actions, and behaviors. And whereas pedestrians are most visible when walking on sidewalks and crossing at marked crosswalks with lighting and other safety features. And whereas all road engineers, designers, and users can and should do more to ensure the safety of others on the road. And now, therefore I, Fonzie A. Flowers, do hereby recognize October, two thousand and twenty five, as Pedestrian Safety Month in the Town of Youngsville, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. In witness hereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Youngsville to be affixed this ninth day of October, two thousand and twenty five. All right, next up on our agenda, we've got some public hearings. Item A, under the public hearings, is an annexation agreement between the towns of Youngsville and Wake Forest. I will open the hearing to the public as of seven oh six and turn things over for a staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe Assistant Town Manager Dorfer introduced and discussed this last month. The line is the same as it has been. There have been no changes recommended or suggested. And the agreement last time was for twenty years, this time it's for ten years. We asked Wake Forest if they would be willing to do twenty years, and they said ten is what they have done with all their other municipalities, and they wanted to keep it on a similar timeframe with those. So there is no changes to it, other than that the duration is now for ten years instead of twenty, but the line's the exact same line.
Okay. All right. Having heard that, I will open it up to comments from the public. Do we have anyone in attendance who would like to speak on the annexation agreement between the towns of Youngsville and Wake Forest? All right, seeing or hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing as of seven oh seven and move into item B, the request to rezone by Dwayne Croats, two five zero eight two, three oh seven East Main Street. I will open that hearing to the public as of seven oh seven and turn things over for staff report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The item I have for your consideration today is a rezoning of the parcel that you see on the screen, addressed three oh seven East Main Street, from residential Main Street Transition to MST to Main Street. The biggest difference between residential Main Street Transition and Main Street is that residential primarily allows for residences. And the applicant has requested a change in order to have a non-residential use. The planning board at their last meeting voted unanimously to recommend that you do accept this planning staff report and approve the rezoning as requested. We staff's recommendation is approval based on the two thousand and fifty Comprehensive Land Use and Transportation Plan and the Future Land Use Map.
Okay. Anything else to add? Good to go, all right. I will open it up to comments from the public at this time. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak on the request to rezone three oh seven East Main Street? All right, seeing or hearing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing as of seven oh nine and move into item C, request to rezone by Wenash Properties LLC, two five zero nine one five at six ninety three Park Avenue. I will open the hearing to the public as of seven oh nine and also turn things over for staff report.
Yes, this is another rezoning for your consideration, this time from a single-family residential to industrial. The parcel is on Park Avenue, it's very teaching. And staff recommended, based on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the Future Land Use Map, a alternate zoning to C one commercial. The Future Land Use Map, as y'all know, guides growth. And yeah, it create, excuse me, guides growth to appropriate areas of the town. And this is a, well, the previous rezoning was very clearly in the downtown center. This rezoning is in the middle of a few different places. There's a residential neighborhood to the south and then an employment and innovation area surrounding this parcel. So it was a less straightforward rezoning, but staff recommended a potential alternative zoning, but looks to the boards to see their recommendation for the site.
Okay. Anything else to add? All right. I will now open things up to comments from the public on the request to rezone, two five zero nine, two five zero nine one five, six ninety three Park Avenue. All right, seeing and hearing none, I will go ahead and close that hearing as of seven eleven and move into citizens' comments. I know, Madam Clark, you said no one had signed up in advance. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to make a citizen's comment? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'll move along into the consent agenda. You've got those items in front of you. What is the pleasure of the board in regards to the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda, second.
All right, yep, first and a second. And I think I even heard a third down there. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. So now we're into item seven, which is all business, the annexation agreement between the towns of Youngsville and Wake Forest. As previously discussed, the action requested here is to approve annexation agreement as presented. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion to approve, got a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item eight, new business. Item A under that is request to rezone by Dwayne Croats, two five zero eight two, three oh seven East Main Street. Action requested here is to approve the requested rezoning from RMST to Main Street because, one, the proposed amendments is consistent with the CLUTP. And, two, the proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use map. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners? All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one point, due to the proximity to one of the commissioner's houses, it might be worth the board pulling that member to see if they can be impartial on it, but it is, in general, a condition to the.
That calls for me. Do you want to recuse yourself in the vote?
I can, I mean, yeah, that's fine, we can.
You want to step out of the room? No, no, no. If you would prefer me to poll everyone and see if there's a, I don't see it, but if.
We could just call one at a time, yeah.
I mean, I'll make a. Madam Clark, how would you prefer? You're the, you're the record keeper, so, and listen, I'm gonna tell you something. When I, when I don't know what the proper protocol is, I always lean on her, because that's the note taker, so.
Do you feel you could be impartial to this?
Yes, sir.
Is the rest of the board comfortable with that?
Commissioner Redd?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
It's fine, because if the rest of the board was not comfortable, then y'all could have recused him if you felt like it.
All right, fair enough. You would have been the first one, too. You want to go on record? I'm kidding, all right, I'm gonna stop, all right.
I move to approve, approve the action as requested.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then item B, request to rezone by Wenash Properties LLC, two five zero nine one five at six ninety three Park Avenue. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners in regards to the request to rezone?
Yeah, with, with this one, as Ms. Garcia mentioned, it's not as straightforward as the one downtown. And I noticed it says, "The proposed rezoning to industrial somewhat aligns with the future land use map." So my, I guess I'll make a motion.
Continue.
I move to table, continue, whatever the right phrase there, this action until next month's meeting, so that Ms. Garcia can provide us a more complete report on the differences there.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion on the table to continue to next month. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, second, yes.
Okay. All right, we got a first and a second there. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, continued on this one till next month. Reports and other business. Saturday's gonna be a really busy day. We've got grand opening at Youngsville Animal Hospital. We also have the Fall Festival at Faith, which is a very highly attended event with the car show, with the bouncy houses, with some of our friends from Kiwanis letting people throw sponges full of water at them, which is always fun. We've got the Main Street Trick or Treating coming up towards the end of the month. If you have a chance to come out and enjoy that, I think it's gonna be a fun time. It's not gonna be a Luddy this year, it's gonna be actually on Main Street, so we'll be able to kind of combine two forces all at once. And I think the last thing that I have is, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend this, and I know there was a lot of things behind the scenes to get this individual to a specific place to receive a specific award. But I wanted to publicly acknowledge Mr. Page and say congratulations.
Opening Manager of the Year.
It's, it's always, yeah, I find it amazing, you know, and regardless of what other folks think, we've got a really great atmosphere here. And I feel like we've got a really strong leadership team and a family environment. And you embrace and encompass that, and I think it was a very well-deserved honor, so.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
And I still haven't won municipal elected official yet. I don't know what's going on with that, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I don't, I don't need all that stuff. I'm done with that, Commissioner Redd?
No, sir, I have nothing.
All right, Commissioner Persson?
I don't have any.
All right, Commissioner Brain?
I think you hit all the, the main points. I've been a little out of pocket the last three weeks, it's been a whirlwind. I was out of the country for a while and unfortunately couldn't make the event where Mr. Page was honored. Hate that I missed that. Well-deserved, and I'll save the rest of my accolades for you for later in the year. Then my, as I mentioned in the, in the prayer, my, my little boy's been sick with, had appendicitis, and luckily we were able to come home today, but we were in the hospital for the last ten days. So glad to have him home and glad that Wake Med was there to provide great care for him. And hopefully in the future, we'll have a hospital closer to us, because we've made many trips back and forth, and I'd rather go about five, ten minutes than forty-five each time. So hopefully that's something we'll, we'll get in our, our future. Nothing really to port from Campo, I talked about it last week. It got passed, so it's moved on to the, the next step. And we will see where it goes, so excited to see the bypass move forward. And that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you, sir. So Commissioner Johnson is on a work assignment down in the mountains, so he is not here. So I'll turn things over to Commissioner Wiggins.
Good.
Good to go, all right. Having heard that, I will then turn, I'm so used to looking at you this way. Our esteemed legal counsel, Ms. Katie Barber Jones, do you have any updates for us?
No, public business, sir, thank you.
Okay, all right. And then we'll start with staff, Mr. Page.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you announcing my resignation at this meeting last month. Just a reminder to anyone who is watching our meeting that we are accepting applications for the Town Manager's position through October sixteenth. And as you said in the meeting, it's posted on the ICMA website, the International City County Managers Association, as well as the North Carolina League of Municipality Big Jobs Board, and then we've also posted it on some of our local social media. When I was looking for this position, those are the places that I was searching, so we should capture the folks who were in similar situations to myself. And I appreciate the graciousness that you've scheduled a day to go over those resumes and CVs with me, to then subsequently make recommendations on the process and procedures that the rest of the staff can help with and then that the board can go through for that replacement. I have great news to report. The audit was finalized today. It still needs to be submitted to the LGC, but there were no findings. It was as boring as an audit can be, this was it. And that's how I like the audits to be.
Boring is good, yes.
One item of note was that the fund balance increased by nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Now, while a million dollars sounds like a lot of money for our fund balance to increase by, I just want to remind the board that two months ago, we did authorize a development agreement for one point five million dollars. So we knew that we were in the black. We weren't exactly sure where the number was, and I think you saw that from Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Dorfer, in that meeting, whether it was four point two or four point seven, but we thought it was right around that four point five number. That's been reassured. And so we're still net around three million for our fund balance if you account for this and the development agreement, which ought to be enough for us to be able to half-blow the LAP project, which I think Planner Garcia has an update on.
I do have an exciting update. The staff met with Campo, our regional transportation organization, for our application for LAP funding that is due on Halloween. And we did learn that the bypass has been moved forward in the MTP, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, of a group of years, making us, number one, eligible for this funding, but also everyone is aware that this bypass is happening faster than it was planned for previously, so that's exciting. The town is going to apply for funds for part of the bypass, and yeah, we're looking forward to see how we score and getting that closer to the finish line. Were you done with your items?
The other piece that I was gonna say was that the NEPA documentation that lines up with the LAP project that Planner Garcia mentioned is also all but complete. We looked through a bunch of those documentation, a bunch of that documentation, and they found no species of environmental concern or anything like that in the potential impacts for the bypass. So we don't see any red flags or any hurdles in the way. It looks like it'll be as clean as a road project that's about a mile long can be.
Also related to the bypass, Mungo Homes has closed on the Rolling Meadows property for about a hundred thousand K an acre, which is an astounding figure. But it doesn't mean that we're, things are moving on multiple fronts, multiple portions of the bypass. And then we recently received our two thousand and twenty-four Certified Population Estimate, and we have crossed the three thousand. So Youngsville is officially certified, three thousand and eighty-eight people big. And that is my update.
You know, for the longest time, like, when I, when I meet with folks, they're like, what is, what is Youngsville like? I'm like, eh, it was still a small town, blah, 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 and we're growing. Well, how, how small is small town? And when I tell them three thousand, they're like, dude, I thought, like, Wake Forest being at sixty thousand was small town. Like, yeah, no, three thou, we have eclipsed the three thousand mark, wow. Man, if you had that many stolen bases or home runs in Major League Baseball, that's a Hall of Fame career, so. Ms. Garcia, any additional updates?
Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you for that, and Madam Clark, did you have anything?
Yes, I have the parade floats. These are, we have the one for Santa, which is the sleigh with the three reindeer. He didn't get all of them this year, but he got three. These are our other two options, the Twelve Days of Christmas or the Fronzetta. I'm having a hard time choosing which one to place you on, so y'all get to choose yourself. The other one will be the Marshall float.
I mean, number twelve gives us more room to, so I was like, number twelve, this thing is bigger.
Y'all want the number twelve? All right.
I mean, that goose, that goose has got cook, so. Yeah, twelve.
I was thinking the same thing. They had post on the number twelve so we can hold on and not.
They always have the best stuff you can sit on. So I'll get that taken care of. For the Trick or Treat on Main, we will have a decorating contest for the businesses. We're having a Mayor's Choice and a People's Choice Award. We'll also do the same thing at Christmas for the businesses on Main Street, a Mayor's Choice and a People's Choice. People will submit their pictures to the town, well, the muck on social media, and let the town or the residents vote on them that way. We just have not had a large, there's not a lot of people that apply every year, and it's almost always the same people. And it's almost always the same people that win. It's, we're just gonna try this this year, we'll see how we like it and go from there.
Okay.
The Sesquicentennial Committee will meet again in November. We took a timeout after the big events in May. But we do need to wrap up a few events in December, including closing the Time Capsule, which will be the last thing that we do. The tree lighting ceremony has been moved to the Luddy Park in order to make room for our fireworks event that will come with that. So everything will take place this year at the Luddy Park. Moscow Design, Sam Hardwick, for those of you that remember him, he is a former mayor, is helping us. His crew will help us figure out the best place to put the big tree at Luddy Park to make it great for that event. And then probably next year, pending, we may go back to Benchmark. Again, the Time Capsule is gonna be one of the last things that we close so that we can have items from the Christmas parade and all of that. The Sesquicentennial merchandise, it is almost the end of the year. Everybody that wants it needs to get it now because it is limited time only. You, once the New Year comes around, maybe a little sketchy on getting a few things. Just see me, you can order them on the website. I will have a table at the Fall Festival as well, so.
Mary, any company still have?
No, they needed more room for their Christmas items.
No, Christmas, gotcha.
Yeah, I get that, the Christmases.
Thank you.
I've been in there at Christmas before, for the fortune, so. But yes, that, on population though, when I first started working here, the population was less than seven hundred. So yeah, it's a huge difference in, in the timeframe that I've been here. It has been very, very interesting to watch. But that does it for me.
The date for the Sesquicentennial meeting, I know you said November.
It's the second.
On Friday?
Day of the, of November.
Fourteenth, okay.
And I will send out the agendas on financial packet, which I'm waiting to do after Saturday, so after I get my sales done on Saturday, I will be able to have a numbers for November agenda package.
Is that ten o'clock?
Any? All right. Yeah, it's, it's kind of comical to think, you know, hit, eclipsing that three thousand mark, everyone that has a, a Youngsville zip code thinks they live in the town limits. And if that's the case, we'd be about twenty-five, thirty thousand. So understanding just basics, you know, savings classes, there's a difference in a township versus a zip code. So it's, it is quite interesting to know. I'd been going with twenty-nine hundred for a while, but now I've got the official, official number. Stamping this piece of paper, I'm taking it with me everywhere I go. Any additional items to discuss, is Mr. Dorfer?
He's by there.
I couldn't see that, did you have any updates?
All set, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Having heard that, there's no need to go into. Having heard that, there's no need to go into closed sessions, so next up is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. 7:30.